The public that don't normally visit us, all our meetings are recorded. You can speak, we'll do a public YouTube. You know you're bored. Are we recording?
Yes.
So, welcome to the August town council meeting for Bingley Town Council. First item on the agenda, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, eighty-one, chairs and marks. So, we're obviously getting to the end of the summer holiday period. The last of our six playing the park events is this Friday in Myrtle Park. And our last bandstand concert for the year is on Sunday at two o'clock in Myrtle Park. I think the summer's been a bit odd, the weather's been relatively kind just for some of the events. And obviously we will be really seeing what we want to carry on with next year. Upcoming events that I know and I'm aware of, there's a relaunch of the Chamber of Trade on Monday the fourth of September, I think we've got that under correspondence. Walkers are welcome, are celebrating as part of National Heritage Week. They're celebrating seventy-five years of the Little Theatre with a walk on the tenth of September that starts at ten o'clock. And on Saturday the sixteenth, we as the town council are holding a networking event for local groups to see how together we can make Bingley better. And that's at Cardigan House, starting at ten o'clock. And all groups and all people are welcome to attend. From looking at things like Facebook and other social media, there is a lot of comments about antisocial behaviour in and around Myrtle Park particularly. The plea we've got from the police is that if you do see it, whilst it's fine to put it on social media, it would help greatly if it was actually reported to them so they can build up a good picture of what's happening and then take appropriate action. And they recommend the live chat service to actually get that through to them. Obviously, we've got Bingley Business Expo coming up towards the end of September. So, we still did some council volunteers took to man the stall. The councillor said he could do the afternoon, so if anyone he could do the morning, please discuss afterwards. And then last but not least, as we look today, congratulations to our own deputy clerk for passing the silker exams, so. So moving on, then twenty-three, twenty-four, eighty-two, apologies for absence. As per book, maybe it's fallen way round. Yep, so we've got councillors Drucker and Mia. Can I have a proposal?
Proposal.
Second up, yeah, so we've got councillor Good, councillor Wounds, taken together, all in favour. Twenty-three, twenty-four, eighty-three, disclosures of interest to receive, declarations of interest from the councils for items on the agenda. Anybody want to declare? It's not, okay. Re- requests for decisions? Twenty-three, twenty-four, eighty-four, the minutes of the previous meeting. Does anybody have any amendments or corrections to the minutes of previous council meetings? Okay, proposed by councillor Clough. Setted by councillor Williams. John, have you had the chance to look at it? Are you all right?
Yeah, fine.
Yeah, all in favour, accept the minutes? Thank you. Twenty-three, twenty-four, eighty-five, confidential items to discuss in confidence after item one hundred and four. To consider if there are any further items on the agenda that need to be discussed in confidence due to its sensitive nature. Does anybody have anything they wish to move?
Can I ask a point of order as to why number one of four is in private session? I mean, I don't know what it's about, I haven't a clue, but I think from Joe Public's point of view, it was in public session.
It's about the contact with a member prior to a meeting.
Okay. Okay, in that case it is personal, I'll leave it there.
Okay. Anybody else? No, okay. So, obviously, twenty-three, twenty-four, eighty-six, city culture update. We will defer at this point, which is a little bit changed because I was hoping we'd dovetail nicely into. Shall I have a quick look at? Yeah, if you were to. Just in case they're struggling to find this as well. Just at the entrance to these venues, a little confusing.
Whoa.
Nice one.
No sign?
No sign, okay. So, we will move on to twenty-three, twenty-four, eighty-seven, public participation. Members of the public, everybody, this is their opportunity to speak to the meeting on any topic relevant to the work of the council. They have not spoken during the rest of the meeting unless specifically invited to do so by the chair. Helen, have you?
Yes, if I may, through the chair, I'd just like to recognise we have a new member for Gilstead, which I'm a resident. And I'd like to ask councillor Shaw, what his priorities will be for Gilstead in particular in the town council than the town in general?
I've been on council before, I know quite a lot of issues with the town centre. And we need to push, especially, and I live in Gilstead myself anyway. So, we need to look at what we're going to do with that. We've got speeding cars, we've got issues with traffic, we've got parking issues, we've got, and just general things around there at the moment. But at the town centre, we've got issues to do with pushing everything else, but we can't do as much as the main councillors can.
May I again ask through the chair, given your very vocal position to the formation of a town council initially, what's changed your mind?
I'm trying to do something in the community.
Can we expect to see you supporting Gilstead Village Society?
Can do, yes. If I get an invitation, I'll turn up, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, can I come to you? Have you got anything you wish to?
No, I'm just here for the enjoyment of being present.
And then Susan, from you.
I didn't come to speak about anything in particular, but if you'd like me to speak about
I would.
the meetings I've organised. Do you want me to do that now?
Yeah, it would be better.
Okay, so the district councillors had a briefing from the City of Culture team a month or so ago in City Hall about the work they're doing. And it occurred to me that what we need to be doing in Bingley is saying, this is what we want from City of Culture, not wait to be told, this is what, you know, you can have or whatever. So, I think some of you know I pulled together help with help from a lot of people. The application with Myrtle Park Friends for the bandstand renovation. It was something that they were very keen to progress with, but I was the person who had the time to sort of pull it together. So, that was a really positive collaboration for that bid. And I thought, you know, this is like, this could be the start of groups in Bingley working together in a positive way to really make twenty twenty-five a very positive year for Bingley. So, I decided to invite people if they wanted to come to a meeting and talk about it, which that took place last Thursday. Philippa kindly came along.
Hi, Shinaaz.
And Shinaaz kindly came along. And I sort of put together my own list of people, like groups I knew to reach out to. And apologies if anyone feels I missed any group or particular person. I'm still building up the list myself. Obviously, as you all know, I'm relatively new to this, I'm learning, I'm learning the groups and people. So, I'm adding to the list of who's on the email list all the time. We've got a meeting, two meetings in October. There's going to be an open meeting on the eleventh of October, again in the Arts Centre, Hupas Six, that's a sort of open meeting. And then I'm also trying to organise monthly meetings for a sort of core group of people who feel they can give time and energy to this. Because if we want, people came out with some brilliant ideas last week, but if we're going to make them happen, there's a lot of work to do. So, Philippa, I'll keep all the information flowing with Philippa. And I'm really happy for people to, if they want to talk to me about what's going on, you know, just ask.
Hey, I've got apologies, we got stuck in traffic coming out of the city centre, which is always a joy around about quarter to six. It's really nice to see everybody again, I think it was me who came last time as well. For those who don't know, I'm Shinaaz, I'm the Creative Director for twenty twenty-five.
And I'm Rhiannon, I'm the Head of Engagement with a focus on the creative programme for twenty twenty-five, nice to meet you.
So, is it worth me kind of giving a quick update? You've obviously heard most of this before, so.
They are the members of the, that's how we council have them, so please, please.
Yeah, really, really happy to do that. So, just to kind of give you an update as to where we are. We are, obviously you'll have heard some of the funding news. So, heritage lots of fund, the CMS, and the Arts Council. So, we're well on our way to raise the funds needed for the City of Culture, but we're constantly kind of at the moment raising funds while trying to pull together a programme. The National Art Heritage Fund success means, obviously, that we are focusing quite heavily within our programme from a heritage perspective. That includes rural, it includes building, it includes people, so it's across everything. It's looking at our history, our heritage, where we are now, and kind of ensuring that we tell our story, the Bradford story properly and as it should be told. We are also kind of looking at how we can create opportunities for community groups. So, I talk a lot about the artists, artist-led art sector, but also we're creating a call-out next year in spring for our community groups. This is not for artists, this is for communities. So, they can kind of apply for funding if they've got an idea that they want to do. As I found out last week, that Bingley's ancient name is a thistles nest, if somebody wants to do a piece around that, if a community group wants to do a piece around that, they can apply for some funding to that pot. That will be in spring next year. At the end of this year, we are doing another call-out, I say end, I'm looking at November, December, where we're going to do a brief, but again, just Bradford artists, the Bradford sector. Nobody from outside Bradford District will get that opportunity, it's just for Bradford. And that is for artists, we're going to respond to a particular brief which we're working on at the moment. Probably February, March next year, we are looking to do a festivals call-out. So, festivals that are happening across the district, there'll be a pot of funding that the festivals can say, actually, there's this brilliant idea that I've got, there's a song I want to write, there's a performer that we need, there's a play we'd like as part of our festival, there's a parade that we want as part of our festival. Something like that, you can actually, you know, I'm just saying things off the top of my head, I'm sure I'm sure my friends and colleagues and peers across the district will have much better ideas than that. But because they know their festivals, we will then be looking at what we can fund and what we can support through that fund. Rhiannon's going to be talking a little bit about the work that she's doing. And there's a major piece of work that I let Rhiannon talk to and talk about. As part of our heritage, when I'm also thinking about rural, one of the first things that I did last year when I was in post-end of last year is I spoke to a lot of the walking groups. So, there is a project as part of our heritage piece that is called Bradford on Foot, that's the title at the moment. So, that is looking at working cross-generational, from children through to our older generations to kind of almost kind of map the district from urban to rural. Because you can walk from a rural, urban location across the district into a rural location. Because I just drove over the tops to get to you guys from the city and it was, you just kind of breathe out every time you come into the rural district, it just means that you constantly breathe out. So, we're kind of trying to think about that from a health and wellbeing perspective, but also kind of bringing back to life some of our heritage walks, some of our walks that are kind of grown over, that haven't been as well used. Kind of looking at why not, what's happened, what's been the kind of building work that's happened around those routes that they've either become less attractive, less used, or people feel like they're not as safe when they do those routes. So, some of that work. We'll be announcing the full programme for the year in September next year. And so, we're doing that as, so that our district, everybody can know what's happening. But also, because we'll be working with community groups, we'll be working with artists, we'll be working with, you know, schools. Those people who are involved will know what's happening within the projects that they're involved in, but actually September we'll be launching the programme. So, everybody will know what's happening as part of our year in twenty twenty-five. As we kind of start, what I found last week and what I found as I'm speaking to people across the district and as our team are going across the district, is everything's kind of synchronising. So, you know, when you're of a place, you know it and you kind of get a sense of what some of the, what some of the kind of, you know, wants might be or needs might be. And then when you meet people and they go, actually, we're thinking about this as well. And we're thinking, this could be an interesting way of doing it. So, then that adds to our thinking. So, they're constantly kind of gathering and saying, how can we add value? How can we give opportunity? And how can we ensure that people feel included so that they're part of it? So, we're constantly doing that. And we were actually on the way here, looking at when's the next town council meeting that we can then attend. So, do it as like a regular update, so make sure that we come to our town councils as well as our city councillors, so that everyone feels like they're involved and included. I'm going to hand over to Rhiannon now.
Thank you. I don't think I've met many of you before, so really nice to meet you. The programme that I'm developing is about making sure that we have more creative communities, but also where those communities are already created, where there's that latent creativity that's already happening in communities. We're shining spotlight on that work and that activity. And also making sure that we get the formal education so that we have a free of charge offer and opportunity available to all two hundred and nine schools, primary and secondary across Bradford District. Developing those ideas, Shinaaz mentioned that Heritage Fund at the moment. One of those programmes that we're developing is called the Bradford Curriculum. We're going to be looking at how we can ensure that young people in schools are aware of the rich, vibrant history of the whole of the Bradford District. So, how can we make sure that young people are also responsible for understanding and telling those stories of their local community? So, rather than just sharing formal information, young people help us tell our own stories back to the rest of the community as well. We have a large piece of work that we're developing with communities, which will allow us to work with artists in all of thirty wards across Bradford. So, that piece of work at the moment, we're just in the process of a funding application for that work. We have plans that will mean that we're starting to work in each ward from twenty twenty-four, so that by twenty twenty-five, there'll be an artist that is working regularly in each of those thirty wards. That work will allow us to work with communities to find out what they are already doing that's cultural and creative, and to expand and bring a spotlight to that work, but also to bring new creative practices to those local communities, areas that they're particularly interested in. We describe that as a socially engaged piece of practice, which might mean that we're working with artists to understand what local communities might like to improve and change, and then using creativity and culture to help make some of those changes. But it also might be for those communities that they just want to have a great fun time. And we're also really up for communities that are kind of wanting to actually just have a bit of a party as well and find their own unique way to celebrate being City of Culture. A couple of other things that I'd just like to mention alongside those two programmes. We're already going to be working in secondary schools, developing a project called Digital Creatives. The aim of that project is that we basically feel that at the moment, a lot of young people are always using devices and they're absolutely brilliant at using devices, but in a bit of a passive way. So, this is about helping young people learn some of those creative and digital skills so that they can become makers of digital technology and make their own digital creative artworks that we can then showcase as part of twenty five. A couple of other ones to mention, which is we've got a freelancer sign-up on if I happen and be a huge success, we're going to need a huge raft of freelancers. That could be anything from British Sign Language interpreters to chaperones working with children and young people. That might be some people who've got loads of time on their hands, who want to offer a real specialist skill for paid work. It might be people who could do a few days here and there and have a particular skill. We ask people to sign up via our website, there's a form on there that will be held on the website for at least another six months. People can sign up to it there. And the other thing just to mention is that some of this work's already happening. We're developing a programme for writers that's just started in the last couple of weeks, working with a national organisation called Paints Plough, who are brilliant at new writing, and a local organisation called Freedom Studios, and that's free training opportunity for writers in the district as well. So, I'll leave it there and I'll hand back to Shinaaz.
So, we wanted to kind of just come and give an update of where we are. A lot of the opportunities that we've talked about, I'm going to actually, call-outs are going to start going out into the public domain because some of this has been as a result of the funding that we've raised. That funding that we've raised is against some of these programme ideas. And so, some of this work is actually going to be done in development, development being, our year is twenty twenty-five, January to December. It will be January to December, but there's development work that has to happen to kind of get us to that point where we have quite a few finished projects, three hundred and sixty-five days and four fifty-two weeks, however you choose to see it, is quite a long time. So, we're trying to kind of embed as much of what we're trying to do within our communities across our district. And with that in mind, we've also, I don't know how many of you might have seen the call-out that we did for a competition, I think it was in February, March this year, which is a Royal Institute of British Architects competition, about a parochetical venue, where actually it goes throughout the district. We've also had the Culture Capital Grant, we're literally going through and finalising decisions for that. And we tried to ensure that there was a district spread for capital, for cultural venues. And we've had, we had three million on the table, we had fifteen million pounds' worth of ask to us. So, that demonstrated need, it also means it got out there and people saw it and people responded. There's eighty applications in total. And so, we've tried to make sure that our kind of the shortlist and the people who have been successful in that is district-wide. So, we've tried to kind of make sure that our programme, our planning, how we're approaching it is kind of trying to bring people along that journey with us. The last ten months have been absolutely about raising the funding, developing a team. When I first came to you, I think it was just me and Dan, I think we'd barely started. And now it's brilliant to be here with Rhiannon this time, with Kate last time. Next time we'll be here with another member of the team, so it's not only me or Dan, but you're getting to see who else is actually delivering the year. We're also doing something called Artist Doppings, once a month. We're inviting artists from across the sector, across the district, to come and meet with us, come and have a chat, come and have a coffee and a cake. It's all about kind of being much more kind of open, much more transparent, and having much more of a conversation. Because that's what's going to help us deliver a year which should be extraordinary. So, I'm going to leave it at that so I can open up for any comments, questions that anybody might have.
You use the word artist, generic, what sort of thing have you got in mind as artist? You said you'd look to have an artist in each ward.
Yeah, that's a really good question. We've talked a lot, actually, me and Shinaaz, about the word artist. I think when you say artist, some people might, well, some people might think you mean a visual artist. And it's really important that for this, we mean it in the broadest possible terms. We've talked variously about losing word artist, but we think it's such an important word, we think we'll stick with it. But we might also add some examples of what that could include, and we might also use the word creative practitioner. Because I think by that, what we find in Bradford is people might be, take part in cultural activity every day, but they wouldn't call it cultural artist activity, or they might not call it art, but they probably are, there's those latent creative skills that everybody has. So, I think actually that what we mean by that is probably the broadest possible definition. We're thinking about hospitality, about food and cooking, about how we take care of ourselves and our friends and family. We're thinking about in some parts of Bradford, like, you know, it could be about kind of graffiti, it could be spoken word, art, it could be visual art. We could also be talking about those quite classical interpretations of art, but we want the definition to be really broad when we're talking about this thirty ward programme.
The legacy, I mean, there's a lot of planning going into what's going to happen in twenty-five, which are very intriguing. But after twenty-five, what is going to be the legacy for Bradford? Is the hope that some of this work will then continue and be embedded into our district into the following years?
That is the hope. You can't, you know, we talk about legacy all the time, it's constant. That and the programme itself, and the people keep waking me up between two and four thirty in the morning. Without the impact of the year, the impact of the year will give us our legacy, but the development over this year and next year will also give us our legacy. Work like the piece that Rhiannon is talking about, that social engaged practice piece. The hope is that actually relationship between artists and communities could become so strong that actually those artists can continue to go to the Arts Council, get funding, and those relationships continue to develop. The Cultural Capital Grant, legacy in hard bricks and mortar is really brilliant to see. And that's why we kind of bid that Culture Capital Grant, because we want our venues to be accessible to wheelchair users, people with disabilities, we need to make sure that if they're going to be up on a first floor or a second floor, they can get there. That's not just for the year, that makes it accessible beyond the year. The work that we're doing with communities and with artists is also the bricks and mortar legacy, but also the people legacy. The cross-district kind of tourism, we talk about tourism and place-making, I mean, we're really lucky. We've got Bradford, Leeds, Wakefield, Manchester, Sheffield, within commuting distance. So, there's a really strong audience base there. What I want for our district, or our hope and dream is, that we have quite a lot more inter-district tourism, where we actually recognise ourselves more as well, because we are the best advocates for our district. So, beyond twenty twenty-five, it's not just the rest of the country waking up to the jewel that is Bradford. We also kind of become our best advocates and ambassadors. So, legacy is bricks and mortar, people and our story.
Yeah, that's very important because it's got to, it's got to have an impact not just in twenty-five.
Absolutely.
And I suppose the artistic and cultural infrastructure needs to be beefed up the best it can, and then, as you say, it continues into the future.
We also know that the council launched the tenure cultural strategy, which is Culture is Our Plan. So, twenty twenty-five, it's midway through it, we've still got another five years as part of Culture is Our Plan. So, we as Bradford City of Culture are absolutely determined to try and make a proper impact and actually be looking at legacy from the get-go. We started our legacy plan in the minute we won City of Culture. The minute we won that, you're starting to think about what is our impact and what is going to be here post-twenty twenty-five.
I'm sure that's, sorry.
And I was just going to say that the majority of our team are of Bradford. We're of Bradford, no City of Culture has actually had that. And the more that we are delivering this, the more that we are developing the programme, the more that we are developing our plans for the year, the more important that is actually becoming.
The creative skill sector that Shinaaz mentioned as well, in the programme that we're talking about, the, and artists in every ward. We're trying to ensure that throughout that year, those artists are also getting opportunity to increase their skill set. So, it's not just about the communities and the people, it's about the artists as well. So, we're working with Bradford Producing Hub to increase the capacity of the local artist skill sector. And every conversation that Shinaaz and myself and the rest of the team are having with international and national artists, it's constantly about what additional value we can leverage for the communities of Bradford. So, how can those international artists come and work with our local artists to share skills and to develop training as well? And also make And also making sure that we have some fundraising capacity for, so that we're sharing some grassroots fundraising skills with local community producers through that programme so that when we get to the end of twenty twenty five, actually those communities and artists have the capacity to be able to do some grassroots fundraising to continue some of those areas of the programme as well.
Do you have an envisaged figure, monetary figure that this City of Culture for the year will bring to the area?
That's constantly shifting at the moment as the funding conversations are being had with funding partners. So we put in a figure of thirty five million where we've put the bid in. So that's where it is at the moment, but we are, we want to grow that, we definitely want to grow that.
That's the funding that we'll bring in, do you mean like sort of gross value added?
No, no, no.
You mean that specifically?
Pure money that City of Culture will bring in from the tourism, et cetera.
Oh, from the tourism, oh, I can give you some of those.
Not what you envisage to raise to do it, what you envisage that it will generate.
That piece of work is ongoing at the moment. That piece of work is ongoing at the moment, because we're looking at not just, not just what we've done already and what we are kind of targeting for our budget, what we've already raised for that budget, but also the economic investment of the Brit School, for instance. That wouldn't have come to Bradford if we hadn't won City of Culture. If we hadn't kind of very much said, our young people, putting our young people at the heart of what we're trying to do for City of Culture, would not have convinced, without that, we wouldn't have convinced Brit School to come. So already that economic investment is massive, it's huge.
So if you're trying to get thirty five million pounds to do it, what is the, what is the times figure that you envisage coming back?
We're literally doing that piece of work with DCMS currently, that's an ongoing piece of work.
So at this point in time, nobody has an idea?
No, they don't, my colleague Dan does, because he's leading that piece of work. I'm not leaving that piece of work, he's, as a director, he's leaving that piece of work, he has those figures.
So you don't know them?
Not off the top of my head, no.
No, 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 just a rough, a rough, you know, what we envisage, thirty five million spend, but we're going to get five times that.
Well, right now, we are looking at, from a visitor perspective, what I can give you is that we want fifteen million visitors to come into the district. I can't give you some because I don't want to say a figure if I haven't got the exact details. If I don't have the exact details, I say a figure and it's not that. So that's the only reason why I don't want to say a figure, because I can't, I shouldn't, I shouldn't just pluck one out of the net. You should actually have the exact figure that we're working to. But from a visitor numbers, we're looking at fifteen million to come into the district.
These are early days for Bradford as a city of culture. From what you've said, things are going well. Do you feel you're accomplishing something already?
It feels like that. Well, as I just said, we wouldn't have got Brit School if we hadn't already, as well as DCMS convincing the other departments in government that Bradford is a viable investment for other sectors of the government to come in, because that was the education department that signed off on Brit School coming in. There's also the partnerships with broadcasters, BBC, Channel Four, Sky Arts, a development programme for young filmmakers, not just young filmmakers, but those filmmakers who are at mid-career and who haven't kind of had that next leg, next opportunities. We're talking people in their late thirties, early forties, who might not have actually had the opportunity. Channel Four's coming, talking to us and saying, actually, what can we do there? So broadcasts, government, funders are all looking to Bradford and saying, actually, we're excited by your plans and how you are driving this forward, we want to work with you. So we think so far, so far, fingers crossed, we're going in the right direction. But who knows what the world holds, because we couldn't have predicted Covid. So we're kind of focused and kind of trying to make sure that we actually keep going the trajectory that we're going. So we think so far it feels, feels successful.
Thank you.
Does anybody get any more questions? Chanel, I've got one, which is, you said you want to keep coming back when you're coming, when you face an appropriate.
So we're into, we're into, I think the next time would be call outs, actually, when we're doing the call outs. So we can actually, once we've landed this next pot of funding, so I think November, December, we're in August now, end of August, beginning of September, so that's in about two, two and a half months, I'd say. When's your next town council meeting?
Well, we have them every, every month, but they get a bit funny around the turn, the turn of the year because of Christmas, et cetera.
So if we say November.
And it's budget saving, so November.
We normally miss one in November. And then we have the early one if you say November.
So I'd say the early one in December then, because that gives us enough time to hopefully, to have landed the next round of funding so that we can actually be talking about the call outs. So we should have the artist call out by then, we should, we should have the, the large scale social practice piece of work call out by then. We should have more team, so there should be another different person for you all to meet at that point as well. And actually, we should have the pattern of the artist dropping as well. So by that point, you know, there'll be much, much more to talk about as well.
Thank you very much for coming.
But it's always, always a pleasure, because if we don't kind of come and speak and talk, we kind of don't know what the thinking is and what the queries are and what the questions are, so we'll keep doing that.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't know if Susan's finished her bit. One more.
No, you've got another member of the public here. I didn't know if you wanted to.
No, 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 I'd love to keep my hat down.
Okay, so we will move on then to agenda item twenty three, twenty four, eighty eight, ongoing items. So our first one was the BCB radio request. Now, we seem to really be struggling to find dates and times for this. I mean, do we actually want to do it?
Are we struggling because of councils or because of BCB or?
Councillors.
What do we want to do?
They want to make a radio programme where they come in, they interview a few of ours, they have a couple of local acts sitting from the corner of the book. And we just talk about what it's like being a councillor and being councillors. We did have a meeting set up, we didn't get confirmation that people were coming. I had asked people to put all their availability for September in a spreadsheet, it's not happened. I'm getting the feeling we don't have a lot of traction to do it. And if we're going to not do it, let's not keep messing it up.
Sorry, Chair, do you have any idea what the take up from other local councils is? You know, it's Shipley all over it, Bowdoin all over it.
Shipley has someone, yes.
What would we want to get out of it? It's more like, we're doing, what do we want to get out of it?
For councils generally, for being a town councillor, or what we has been, basically are.
So we've got some jewels in the crown that we can explore and show them.
Well, it's whatever people would want to take part or want to bring to the table.
I think it's more than that, I think it's a councillor, what a councillor wants to discuss, not to show, not what individuals want to show.
Well, they want to, they want to interview individuals.
No, I get that, but it's got to be a common narrative, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's got to be the things that really interest individuals.
Joe Ashton, the clerk of Shipley, brought up.
He is the clerk.
He is the clerk, well, there's the clerk, get him on the way, yeah.
Well, no, I think.
I don't want to be involved. When they did.
Councillors, they volunteered, but the councillors, they volunteered, oh, but he wanted to speak to councillors.
I said I'd do it, but sorry, I haven't seen this, but she, that's passed me by.
It's on Teams.
All right.
I provided, I provided my input via X, via email, but I haven't put it on the Teams then, so.
But no one else has.
Well, I, I mean, my view is I'd do it with an arm pressed up behind my back. My, my, my London accent doesn't come across well on a tape recorder, I know that, I'm old. It's been dogging me for forty years, so, you know, I'm not, not maybe the best person, but I, I'll go for it. We need Lewis Curdall back, that's what we need.
Well, yeah, but he wants to do like an hour programme, so it's, it's got to have sufficient people with arms on their backs, if that's the way we're doing it.
I'm willing to be involved, and I would have gone to the earlier meeting, but I know it's been difficult finding a mutually convenient spot.
But do we just want to say, not at this time, thank you very much?
Is that your, your gut feel?
Given the, the amount of the struggles we're having to take it forward, I think so. Unless, unless there is an upswell of take up to do it.
Is that your thought?
That's my thought.
I'll second it.
All my favour of not doing, no idea for it. Oh, can you put your hand up? So that, that means we don't do it? We will politely decline. Been with Paul, just an update?
No update at the moment from friends of him.
We've still got no idea when they might hold, any?
No, because we're still struggling for trustees, similar problem. Can't get people to come on board and do the work. So we're just trying to poddle on at the moment and get some trustees on board.
That's a little bit disappointing, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, there's, there's various issues with that and it's just, it's just getting, we're just getting through that transitional phase.
Wait, we'll move on then, can we, can we launch that into City of Culture?
Not really.
A grant or something like that?
Well, all that's in place, it's trustees we need to do the work, to do, filling in the forms of the grants and publicising and nothing and other. There just isn't enough of us, there's only three of us who are active at the moment. And we just can't do everything, so we're basically just treading water.
So to speak.
Just not in Big Macool.
Okay, we'll move on then to climate emergency. I think everyone's had Steve's paper last month.
Yeah, if I, if I may, Chair, I, I've kicked this around for a year or more now and to my mind, when that was put before the council, it, it came with no evidence, other than the fact here's a nice policy that's been put before district councils and district councils can impact their carbon footprint by, they'll play bus services and things like that. So they, they'll play fleets of refused vans and things like that. So they can actually do anything, but a parish council couldn't, and I argued about it at the time. And since that time, we've struggled to have a climate emergency meeting. We struggled to talk about anything in, in there. And if you look at the, the bullet points which were in the original motion, we can't do any of them. So I, I get that it's an emotive topic and it's the word that climate emergency gets me. So I think the only data that's out there is the Icelandic Ice Core, which has real data going back over tens of thousands of years. And that reveals that the earth's climate has varied for as long as the planet has existed, with natural cold and warm phases. In fact, the Little Ice Age ended as recently as eighteen fifty. Therefore, it's no surprise that we're now experiencing a bit of warming, because we're coming out of an ice age. But people don't understand that or even know about it. But the warming is now far slower than predicted. The world has warmed significantly less than predicted by the IPCC, which is the international party for climate change under the World Health Organisation. So climate models also have many shortcomings and they're not remotely plausible global policy tools. Basically garbage into them, garbage out. They blow up the effect of greenhouse gases such as CO2. I asked in my paper if anyone knew what the percentage of carbon dioxide was in the atmosphere and this came up briefly in the last meeting. So I won't test you, but it's, it's basically four hundred and seven parts per million. The, the, the charts describe it as a trace element. And, you know, if you're going to go and eat something with a trace element of salt or whatever, you know, you don't even worry about it. But I guess if you could say if it's a trace element stricken, you might. But it, it's not, it, it's not huge. They also ignore the fact that enriching the atmosphere with CO2 is actually beneficial, it's not a pollutant. It's essential for all life on earth. Photosensuses of plants use it, they pump CO2 into greenhouses in, in Holland. But everyone isn't, or one is simply not allowed now to research into non-CO2 global warming, i.e. look for other reasons for it, like water vapour from seas and things like that. I mentioned the Milankovich cycles in my paper, I don't know whether anyone looked that up, but the, the earth is tilting and spinning all the time on the planet, that's what gives rise to the faces. But because you're not allowed to research into non-CO2 global warming, they can say ninety seven percent of all scientists agree, but that's only because the other side can't get funding. All scientists need to be paid and if you can't get funding, you don't, you don't live, so that, that's why. But everyone needs to get paid, including climate scientists. But as, as an aside, does anyone remember Jonathan Van Tam from Covid? Guess where he is now, Pfizer.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, yeah, he's chief scientist at Pfizer, so he couldn't say anything against mRNA because he was going to bite the hand that was feeding him. So you've got to look at the follow the money. But as we know from experiencing in other complex areas, misleading, how misleading computer models can be. Think about the many wrong predictions by economic models. Think of the large mistakes in recent pandemic modelling. The output of computer, computer models depends fully on the assumptions that model makers put into them. And in the past fifty years, the predictions, the predictions of climate models about global warming, their dire effects, have all been wrong. In the engineering community, these models would be classified as useless. But modern satellites now deliver high quality measurements around the earth since nineteen seventy nine and satellite data shows no extreme warming of the planet. And this is cross-checked by millions of weather balloon measurements around the planet. But talking, you know, bring it back down to earth, if, if we consider the pun. If we look at the mean temperature difference between Oslo, Norway, near the North Pole, and Singapore, near the equator, measurements show the difference there is much as twenty two degrees centigrade, twenty times bigger than the global warming between eighteen fifty and twenty twenty, and almost fourteen times bigger than the so-called scary global warming of one point six degrees centigrade between eighteen fifty and twenty fifty. But despite this huge mean temperature difference at twenty two degrees centigrade, most cities are very prosperous and the citizens in both cities are enjoying life. So why do the media tell us that global warming of one point six degrees centigrade or more will lead to a disaster? Whilst twenty two degrees difference between Oslo and Singapore turns out to be no problem whatsoever. I said just now, follow the money. Our government is committing, the UK, to spend one point three eight trillion pounds to release our car, reduce our carbon footprint from twenty twenty to twenty fifty. That's just under fifty K per UK household, but for what? It won't move the dial one iota. But as a flippant comment, if they can say that hot weather in Caorfu is global warming, can I say that cold wind, cold weather here in Bingham is global cooling? You know, it's, it's just half a dozen one or six to the other. Anyway, whatever the reasons for climate change, it's not a subject that a parish council can, can affect. Hence my motion to strike it from the agenda. And the, the, the motion is written on the agenda to agree that a climate emergency, whether it exists or not, so I'm not arguing that it doesn't exist, that's down to each individual. I just don't think it's a matter for a parish council.
I'll second it. Does anybody want to say?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd just like to say, thank you, Steve, but this is not, you've just been trying to inf, uh, tell people that the climate emergency doesn't exist, et cetera, et cetera. This is, all this motion is, is it to stay as a standing item? That's end of, so thank you for your last fifteen minutes, I found it really frustrating listening to it. But could, could we move on and, and vote on this? It's quite true that nothing since Edwina and that sort of era left, that. that nothing has been done. So there is basically no point in having it as, as a regular item if we aren't going to discuss it. So if you second it, I think you should have a vote.
And, 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 and ju- just very quickly, I think it's, I think John's point is correct and, and, and Steve's point is correct. And that clearly we haven't got the wherewithal to do anything about it. And, and, and I would support that it's not a standing item. But I think it's important to stress that the council is still committed to environmental, sound environmental issues. And the work which John, um, leads on clean and green is a positive and practical, um, contribution to improving the environment.
That is, that is something that Steve says, Steve, Steve just said that Bingley Town Council don't have any influence on, but anything that's improving, uh, envi- environmental issues, uh, I'm not a, I'm not a left-wing environmentalist. I'm a practical environmentalist. Uh, and, uh.
And you do stuff, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I, I, I would say from my perspective, I, I don't necessarily agree with Steve around the climate emergency, but we, as a council, we are not active with doing anything on it. So I don't think it should be a standing agenda item. And if we do do something, we should bring it back and should.
Exactly.
Same to three of you.
Yep.
So Steve, you would have prepared your motion?
Yeah, I've done. It's seconded and it's survived.
I propose that this council agrees that a climate emergency, whether it exists or not, is not a matter for a parish council. And as such, the subject will be removed as a standing item, agenda. Item, agenda item. So I propose.
Uh, um.
All in favour of removing it as an agenda? So D speed indicators, uh, from my last partnership meeting in Bradford, still have not come out with their policy or current policy and what, what it should be. Um, I know we've had some correspondence from residents in Gilstead Lane about speeds on the road. And have we determined where we, what of our suggested locations for these devices?
I will locate in the next day or two and we, we actually did send some pictures of them, but I'll check.
Yeah, I just don't know if they're exactly where.
I think we are.
So where are we? Because I got the impression that Bradford had changed the policy that they weren't allowing, allowing us to do it. So how can we do anything? You might as well put that, now that offers a standing, standing item until something comes up.
But they haven't changed the policy. They're reviewing the policy, but they seem to have been reviewing the policy for, for a long period of time.
Okay.
So, so yeah, we're, we are.
Leave it on the agenda then.
Through you, Chair, can I perhaps, perhaps, um, um, alert our district councillors to the conundrum which we're struggling with regarding getting these cids, which we prepared to pay for. And, and we've, we've had it in our board for the last two years.
At least two, three.
And bureaucratic issues seem to be getting in the way of us getting them installed. So if either of you could raise the matter with the, um, authorities concerned, it might help.
So I, I'm happy to do that, but I would like full details.
Yeah, we, we could, we could pick it up.
Thanks.
I mean, it comes up at every board partnership meeting where, where I've got these, so that we can go forward. And unfortunately, we will, we will use our own cashless to our hands. It will be missed at the moment. I'm not sure what we need to.
Oh, yeah.
Don't tell the press.
Right, it'll be twenty twenty five.
To get some, some information from. Okay, we'll move, we'll move on unless there's anything else on cids. Twenty-three, twenty-four, eighty-nine, finance to receive and approve scheduled payments for August. Anybody have any queries on the scheduled payments? Okay, I'll propose it. Second fellow councillor, all in favour of accepting scheduled payments? Are you with councillor Williams?
Yes, I am.
And to agree the reconciliations for July, any queries on those?
No. What was that?
Preferred by councillor Good, second by councillor Winner, all in favour? Okay. Twenty-three, twenty-four, ninety, policies to consider the need for a detailed review of the council's financial regulations and standing orders. Um, I think since we approved both of these in May, there's been a number of discussions that's gone on. Um, there's, there's a number of areas where we know we still got to create the business case for us. That for council, what that will have some minor implications for the financial regulations. Um, there's been some discussions around what standing orders actually say and how we do act on the sort of the meetings. Um, so according to standing orders, we should, mostly are written on, on, on the agenda as written. And we do have lots of agenda items where we say we'll agree a way forward and we will take, we do as a matter of practice. Um, taking proposal on the vote on, which seems to go against the standing orders as, as written. So I think they probably do need to have a, a thorough review of them and just make sure that they are working and fit for purpose for how we want to work and how we do work. Um, my suggestion would be that we push them back through F and G P to have a, have a look at and revise.
Yeah, and, and a small working group could go through them.
Any objections to that?
No.
I mean, clearly, Chair, I mean, we'd only change them if we feel so we change them. Because obviously a lot of them are perfectly fit for purpose and we've, we've reviewed various bits from time to time. But there are a few issues which have emerged recently, which we've, we've somewhat been constrained by.
Yes, we, we do, we do, we do need to ensure that they do reflect how we want to work as well as how we should work as well. Okay, so we'll push that to F and G P. Twenty-three, twenty-four, ninety-one, what about councillors to external bodies? Uh, pub watch and its current form. So did the regular need for councillor pub watch? Councillor Williams, you say anything? I mean, circulated your paper?
Uh, circulated the paper. I mean, basically, that's a small group of, uh, publicans who call together ad hoc meetings as and when necessary. Like after the Bingley Weekender, they had a quick urgent meeting because they had a few fights. Uh, what they're not gonna do is share with us details. They're not gonna share with us an agenda. They're not gonna share with us any names. Um, or if we do have names, because we are there, uh, we, we can't discuss it in this form because GDPR and things like that's come along. Um, so, uh, we could raise with, um, um, issues outside of, you know, a pub for littering or broken glass or whatever, but they say, well, then that's not a, an issue of pub watch, which is purely about the misbehaviour of people within the pubs. So if you wanna raise it with the pub itself, crack on, but it's now to do with pub watch. So I think it was one of those, um, misunderstandings of what the pub watch thing was all about. Whilst we put our hands up and said, uh, we need two people to go. But I think it's, we're sticking our nose in where it doesn't really want to be. So I've recommended that we strike the need for two councillors to attend pub watch.
No second then? You're all in favour?
That's a fine.
This is a bigger surprise.
No, no pub watch. I mean, it has to be said again at the Ward Partnership, the police say pub watch is working very well.
Hmm, well, they don't go. Andy Alderson doesn't go. Just as an aside, Andy Alderson doesn't go, nor do the police. They go when there's an issue, when they've been called, if there's GBH or ABH or whatever going on.
Right, so we will delay them from our list of committees and bodies that we attend. Twenty-three, twenty-four, ninety-two, the link between Bradford Council and the town council.
Right, then, obviously I'm relatively new to this. Um, and I've sort of like seen some on social media lately and that, and obviously the new road layout down by the school has caused a lot of issues with people. Um, some of the practicalities of it, don't you, have been worked out before the meeting? And there just seems to be, to me, uh, as a newcomer, that there doesn't seem to be any link between Bradford Council, uh, the Bradford, sorry, the, the Bingley councillors that are on Bradford, the three of them, excuse me, totally there. Um, and the, and the Bingley Town Council, there doesn't seem to be any coercion. So we don't seem to know what's going on over there. That could be embarrassing to us. And we could do something over here. It could be embarrassing to yourselves. But the main thing is that the people of Bingley look out and say, look at what the council's done and point the finger at all of us. And we've had no input into many things, if that sounds a bit. So I'm just sort of looking, is there, is there a, some sort of coercion that could happen between the three Bradford councillors representing Bingley and the Bingley Town Council? Because it seems to be two separate entities of different directions.
I don't really want a response to that.
I think you do.
Um.
Well, so sorry, but you two are actually here. I didn't know you were gonna be here.
No, it's all right.
But seeing you are, you.
I'm very happy to. It's a good question. Happy to answer it. And so the simple truth is, the town council was founded in twenty sixteen, was founded uh, on the basis that it felt we weren't getting enough out of Bradford and, uh, people stood up to try and see what they could do to the community, which is why all of you are here today. But, and it's done, I think, in my view, and I'm with Mark, I originally opposed the town council formation. And, uh, but I stood because I felt they needed representatives who shared the scepticism. But I have to say, I've been pleasantly surprised at some of the things we've been able to do to improve our community. And I think John's been a stalwart since twenty sixteen, uh, going out there and doing all the good environmental work. Um, as for our part, yeah, we recognise there's a disconnect between district councillors and town councils. So as of, uh, well, the space where we can finally breathe, having got a better understanding of our rules. So like you, we're all fairly new to the post. Uh, longer serving, uh, Labour district councillors only been in there two years and a bit. Um, so we've, we've got a better handle of things. And so now we've taken the view that we want to have a better relationship with the town council. And we recognise that disconnect existed. And whether that's through space, time, or whatever the reasons are for it, uh, we've agreed that at least one of us will be here at every town council meeting going forward. So you'll always be able to put these, put any questions you have to us. And we'll be able to report back if you'd like us to on the activities we're engaged in. And so you're involved in that consultation as well and we can get your feedback. Uh, obviously some things will be sensitive, so we won't be able to share with you directly uh, at that moment, but we will share the thinking behind it if, of course, when it goes public. Um, but yeah, you're right. Uh, so we're trying to build that bridge.
Chair, it's, it is fair to say though, that with this, um, road layout down past the school, it did come to town council, being the town council aware, because I can remember we discussed it at least one meeting, if not two, so.
But I'm not sure that the road layout as it now exists.
It is more of a, no.
It's what counts, because these things just don't do.
It's, it has changed, but we didn't discuss it.
I don't see a problem. It's supposed to be a traffic calming exercise and it'll, it'll certainly calm the traffic.
It's possible, it's possible.
Can we have one more here?
I think councillor Clough is right, he did come to us, but I think what, uh, councillor Forster is saying, you're gonna create a greater involvement. And I wonder whether the two district councillors saw more of that scheme in discussion before it was started and had meetings with the ward, uh, the officers, like the, the, the road guys, to really understand the impact on that stretch of road. Because what we saw was a little tiny PDF, which was hard to get your teeth around. And it was all yellow boxes and codes and keys and things. And the reality of it seems to be far removed from the, the little PDF we saw. And I'm wondering, and I think what Michael is, is getting at is, you know, would have been better because it impacts on Bingley, whether these guys could have come along and put up a, a bigger map and talked to us about dimensions and perhaps meet there and talk about. Because to me, the, the bus stops are absolutely blocking the thoroughfare. And there's a matter of time before there's an accident. Picking up, uh, councillor Good's point, yeah, it slows the traffic down. Um, I've got friends who live there, uh, in Southland Grove or whatever, and they said it's brilliant. So because, you know, the traffic used to scream down there coming out of Bingley, not just the floor, we're going down the road. So it's half a dozen one and six to the other again. Some people like it, some people don't. But I think it's true to say that we didn't really appreciate the full extent of the impact of it. When you look at it and you think, my goodness, I, I've got neighbours who think it's part of the fifteen minute city that you guys are bringing in by stealth and that's gonna be a gateway with, with a bowie.
To, to, to be fair to myself, I was elected in May. Councillor Winard may be able to answer your question.
And I, I mean, thanks, yeah, that's a fair, that's a fair comment. Um, I think people need to know the background of the whole scheme was that there was some terrible fatalities in accidents on that stretch of road going past Bradford School. And, um, quite often the solution was a different matter, but it's fair to say lots of residents on, on that stretch of road, some of them on Bingley Ward, some on Bingley Road, um, clearly wanted some action, the school wanted some action. Um, but, 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 and, and, and the Bradford Council was able to and get substantial funding from the West Yorkshire Combined Authority, um, from their fund which deals with accidents, air and prone roads to, to do this work. Um, I think it's fair to say that since it's been implemented, there are mixed reviews. I mean, I, I think it's fair to say that, as I think Steve's point is, lots of people, when they see things on maps, don't quite know how they're gonna actually work out in practice. I think the bus stop is a problem because, um, I know there's a lady who rang me up thinking I was still a councillor. Um, and complaining that it was difficult for her to, um, get to the, um, the bus stop because she had some sort of walking device, you know, a trolley type thing to push ahead. And, and it was, was, was challenging for her. And there's been issues about where people can park along there. There's been issues about people that maybe parking in the side roads, um, and, and all of those things. So I, so I, I think that some of the criticism is, 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 is reasonable. There were other things which didn't happen. There were suggestions which I think we resisted. I think, um, for putting road humps on Wagon Lane, which to me seemed unnecessary. Um, there was, um, I think there was some suggestions for some further road humps in the, um, the main road, which I think that, uh, you know, Bingley people have got enough road humps in, in, in our vicinity. Um, but I, I, I think, I think the, the, the point Michael makes generally is that there is a mismatch between what members of the public, who members of the public think are responsible for things. And, and they blame councils, they think we're, it's our councils much as Bradford. And I think, you know, how we get over that sort of thing is probably the, the real challenge.
Chair, can I just say, I mean, how well informed are you as ward councillors to be able to pass information back to us? Because the method, what we're saying here is, you know, there's no information coming back. We don't get anything. So obviously you know about stuff. That can have an impact on what's happening in Bingley. So it'd be useful to get a feedback on that. That's really, that's really what this is about. And I mean, I appreciate we've diversified into redoing the road down in the opposite, the Bingley Grammar School, opposite Bedford Grammar School. But really here it's how can we work together to get information? How will it work and what can you give us? Because, you know, we get nothing, Mr Simples.
It's not fair to expect us to answer this. No, it's really just throwing it utter at, it at us.
No, we're asking the question, how can you even?
So it's, uh, so we have the ward partnership meetings where the ca- the town council is represented. Um, so, uh, but, and I, I think my, Joe, Marcus and I can discuss this, uh, listed through.
But if you come into these meetings, you can impart information, can't you?
Yeah, you can. And I think that's one of the key aims. So as Susan did to briefing at the start, uh, she said she was going to, and we'll certainly, um, do that as and when we can. It's gotta be one of those where we work it as we go along.
I appreciate that, Joe. I mean, that's inevitable.
Oh, yeah. No, so.
But I think for me though, there's two, there's two things, sorry, there, there's two things here. We shouldn't major on these guys because part I, part of, I think, our general frustration and part of our issues are, we tend to say something once and then it goes, but goes off. We'll, we'll send comments back from things that we're consulting. We'll, we'll send comments back from things that we're consulted on. It's a bit like planning, however, isn't it, where we have, we, we make comments. But then breadth of planning department, how negotiations with developers and will, will agree something that we've never seen again. So it's, it's, it's more that, how do we get information back from council officers? As opposed to specifically the ward councillors, I think. And how, how can we make that flow of information better? Because I think that's where we all struggle and we all get frustrated. Because we know, we do have some people who will comment saying, you've had this on your agenda for years because it's just making drip, drip, drip flow process. So I think it's almost a broader thing, so let's not put it all on the, the, these guys.
No, they will have some information they can put back to us.
They will, they will, they will probably have somewhat better information on some things than us. And I suspect they also struggle, but they probably have better access to council offices.
I was just going to point that out, Chair, that it actually says the link between Bradford Council and the Town. Not the district councillors and the council.
But they are Bradford Council.
No, they're not. Well, they're not.
So you're representing on Bradford Council.
Yeah, you said on Bradford Council.
I'm acutely, I'm acutely aware.
If you didn't have a lord of the council.
As I live in Cotley, that there are cot, uh-huh, district councillors who represent Cotley. And I'm not sure whether that's one of the district councillors of yours tonight.
No, they're not.
So can you get together, this has nothing to do with politics, it's just about attending your Town Council meeting. Can they get together, please, and make sure that we do see a district councillor come in who actually represents?
From Bingley Rural.
Bingley Rural.
I don't think that's our responsibility.
I just definitely also works the other way. You know, if we have issues in our wards, we need to let the local councils know as well. We expect them to help us and back us. We need to let them know. So, you know, if we don't, we can't mind if we don't get any, any support.
Let them know what we're interested in.
I mean, everyone, obviously, everybody is welcome to attend there, so it depends. I'll, I'll say that in a little bit, I'm sure that's true.
Just on Mark's point, I think, the one suggestion I can think of is if you do have any questions ahead, ideally ahead of your full council meetings. Just send us the question, so that way we can come back hopefully with a fully informed answer.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, yeah.
Reasonable ask and then.
But there'll be things happening that we don't know about.
Yeah.
That you can inform us of, that's really what it is.
On Michael's point about, sorry, it was Steve's point about the PDF. Yeah, Geoff and I got a much more comprehensive Here Are Giant Maps and Layouts, which I'm sure if we'd asked the question, can we share this further afield, or can we get a proper full size of this? Yes, we could have done that. And you could have seen the full scale plan. So I'm hap, where we can do that, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, it's fine. Good.
Don't worry, happy to do that.
Thank you.
No, if we can get something going regularly that involves everybody, then it's great. Most things trump their name shape as it is.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael, thank you, guys. Twenty-three, twenty-four, ninety-three, emergency call, please, please, not late, recommend connections, emergency support.
Yeah, minutes have been circulated. We moved the review of equipment forward. So hopefully, we'll be fully stocked with whatever we need before the dark nights, rather than leaving it till end of year. We are in the process of arranging some training for the committee through McBorough, Bradford Council, which has been very helpful and very useful going through this process. And I presume we've got the dates and they'll be circulated.
Any questions, councillor Hasselton? Okay, twenty-three, twenty-four, ninety-four, finance and general purposes committee, please, an update, recommend connections, F and G.
Okay, the minutes have been circulated. I'll just pull out a few bits and pieces, grants, we had a grant. We made grant decisions at the meeting last month with three hundred and fifty-eight pounds to the Cotley Village Society.
Village History Society, sorry, I meant to.
I'm just reading. But you're right, you're absolutely right.
I'm not being pedantic, it's just that it is not the community association, it's, it's a, it's a separate entity altogether. It's Cotley Village History Society. Sorry, Eve, I'm going to let you know, so.
Anyway, that was for a projector, so that they can use it for their, their meetings. And we also paid three hundred and eighty-two pounds, or agreed three hundred and eighty-two pounds to the Jerwood Action Group for various works that they're going to do. A lot of stuff's been going on around allotments, largely due to some good work by councillors Hesseltine and Fenton, who've been doing all sorts of work down on the allotment site. We heard a report that the allotment forum with the allotment holders had gone well and had received some positive feedback, so I think that's worthy of note. There's been some consideration given to, or will be consideration given to whether some sort of handyman might be commissioned or on a call-off basis to, to do some of the work which occasionally needs to be done around the allotments. And the, the various bits of the work on the allotments, of course, is starting to cost us some money. So what we, we agreed was that the, some money from the allotment's reserve fund should be viored into the allotment's account to ensure that monies, you know, the, these costs are met from, from the reserves, which of course are what the reserves, the allotment reserve is, is, is for. So it's recommended that four thousand two hundred pounds from the allotment reserve fund should be viored into the allotment cost centre.
Second man.
May I make a comment?
You may.
Yeah, thank you for the comments regarding yourself and councillor Fenton. Equally as active was our chair of council. Philippa and her partner spent nearly as much time as us there doing the work as well, so we can't really miss them out.
So hoping that goes in the record.
So we have a proposal, the second, that they need to vary on the money. John, you're proposing, Geoff?
Yeah, second.
Well, it's probably relevant, just out of interest. You don't have that movie, it's a morning from extra wide. How, how many, the question is, are all the rents up to date for the, for the allotment?
Yes. I mean, for, for background.
We don't bring in lots of money, the rent.
No, no, I get, I get. You were seconds from that, you were old.
We've always said the allotment should work out for themselves, and it's a constant job, but they came, they opened to, to cover up some of the baggage and issues that can be. So all in favour of varying, varying the money. And I think there was one of the things that, that I think was on, which was around, we have but four councils in the past. So we've moved some of our money into the public sector deposit account. The paperwork process, the paperwork process for that has been prolonged. So I think we did decide we'd move a lesser sum because we've now got lesser money. But it's still not gone. Just so people are aware, and that would, so, so money will go into the interest bearing area, that's what I'm following.
No, it's all right, it's all right, there will be lots of things for the rates.
Any, any, any questions on F and G, for Geoff? Well, okay, we'll move on. Twenty-three, twenty-four, ninety-five, the council is planning working group.
Okay, thanks, Chair. Well, we were last here. The neighbourhood plan working group lumbers on with this project. We have reached a point where we're happy with the draft neighbourhood plan. The up-to-date version is on Teams. However, Aldrid Designs was on holiday back yesterday. And hasn't this morning updated the several typos that were needed. But they were really minor, I'm happy to read them out to you. There was this, can, can list doctor surgery in Bing One, which is a policy. We just changed it to list it in Bing One because we'd already done it, and that occurred twice. And the other big typo was really that we were defending the post office in Bingley, in Gilstead, which is already closed, and there's a new one open in Priestall. So we deleted that and added the, the one in Priestall onto a new Bingley chart. So that's really detailed within the plan itself. And there was one typing typo where it said whackling instead of walking. So really, they were just saying before we put it to you guys and get it out into the public marketplace, those small details should be updated. So the plan is before you for agreeing. We're not, not ready to go to Regulation fourteen survey as yet because we're still talking about the wherewithal of how we tell the population that Reg fourteen is out there. We have had some fairly high costings back from the Royal Mail. We know what the distribution is for, cost per hour annual newsletter is about eleven hundred pounds. And the Royal Mail were circa sort of eight half thousand. And we, we don't, we don't really have a clear idea of what's best to do yet. So the client was off asking other councils what they did. And the other local councils didn't send a, a, a postcard out to every household. So I guess for our next meeting, we'll be deciding whether or not we need to do that. But it's currently in our plan to send a postcard to dear occupier. The, the, the plan is out there for a survey with the web links and things like that. The issue for us in using the walking routes, so the annual newsletter, is basically there are certain blocks of apartments that they can't get access to. So whilst we're saying we would do it to all, we, we know we're not. So it's how do we cater for those, whereas Royal Mail can. But there, there was an email came out today about confusion between our annual newsletter and the Conservative newsletter, which someone had mixed together. But it does, I mean, I received some junk mail from the Royal Mail this morning, along with a typed named letter. So we don't, we haven't got a handle on it. So we, we, what we're doing with the council is seeking to approve what we can at this point in time. So that the working group can focus on what it needs to focus on. So the first motion is to agree the plan. But there's a separate piece of paper which the working group agreed we ought to flag to you. And it's, it's a chart. It's actually the combination of two tables from the plan. So I've not changed the wordings of it at all. What I've done is to highlight in yellow the activities that this council will be doing once we agree the plan. The consultant was pointing out to us that we need not wait to the end of the West Wing, which is the end of Regulation sixteen, which on the current timetable was sometime in twenty twenty-five, before we start to do these things, because these are the sort of things that we should be doing anyway. If I can just highlight a couple of them. In Micklethwaite, it says, bring the Town Council to discuss with bus companies options for connecting bus from Micklethwaite to other settlements. There's a similar one in Eldrick to bus from Eldrick to the town. And linking all the sub areas together. There's another one about working with the other allotment companies in Micklethwaite and Wagon, Warran Lane, to make sure that we're aware of vacancies and usage of those allotments so that we can defend allotments generally. There's a, working with the school, Bingley Grammar, to improve the biodiversity of areas of the school site, which might create environmental benefits, strengthen the case for retention of underused lands and open use. Should, should in future parts of school fields be deemed circus to requirements, so defending green spaces. Now, these things don't have a lot of cost. They do have cost in terms of council time and councillors' time and staff time. But they're not things which generically say we shouldn't be doing. You know, we should be looking at the application of the design code and Bradford's design code on our high street. We should be talking to the building owners of the potting shed to say, could you remove your eight-foot silver birch tree at the roof line, please, it's letting the high street down. You know, we should as a council be doing some of these things now. So I just wanted to let the councillors know that embedded within this hundred and five pages is these two tables which are aspirations for this council to do. And I personally think that our priority list should be drawn from these lists as well as doing SIDS and things like that. We should be aware of these things in the, the plan. Because the plan is for the next thirteen years, starting now from when we vote it. So that's, that's that on the council. Now, Chair, do you want to vote these things individually as we get to them?
I, I think, I think we need to, and then just on.
So let's have a discussion then about the neighbourhood plan, the hundred and four pages of PDF that Aldrid Designs have presented and laid before you.
I, I mean, Steve's pulled out this list of aspirations, just so they are in front of people and they're seeing them. But just to be clear, the plan does identify some of the aspirations. It's not necessarily meaning the Town Council have the ability or the funds to do any of these projects. The projects will require equipment, so they are.
They require business cases, risk and legal documents.
We're, we're not necessarily going to do it, so we're not committing the Town Council to do these things. These are the things that people pull out that the community, we're the ones that communities want. And what, what to say happens, but how they will necessarily happen is not, we're not committing ourselves to deliver any of it. I think we need to just be clear on that.
But, but the contrary to that, if we get to the end of thirteen years and have done none of them, you wonder why we got it in the first place. So you've got to have a mind to say that that's a list of aspirations, and therefore we should cut that off.
If people come forward with ideas to deliver them, we should be very, very serious on that.
And then if I can say, I mean, I think whether they're deliverables is different. But I think these are the right sort of things which ideally the council should be looking at. Whether we have the wherewithal to do all of them, this, this, this. But I think that when we're thinking about work programmes and things, say, for coming years, we need to go into here and pick out some of the things which we can actually deliver.
Yeah, I, I had a, as an aside, I had a conversation with Marcus, the missing district councillor tonight. And hi, his view was that a primary function of a Town Council is to deliver for the community a fairly big project every four or five years or so, which is not being delivered by the district council. And I wondered whether he was thinking a swimming pool at four point one million, I wasn't quite sure. But, you know, joking apart, essentially, you know, we have the capability to deliver a set of toilets with a hundred and eight, seven thousand pounds, so that, that was delivered. The CP toilet, sixty-five thousand. So we, we shouldn't let big projects, you know, slip away because, you know, councillors feel that we haven't got the capabilities, because we have proven we have.
So does anybody have any questions for Steve on the neighbourhood plan itself, or that, those aspirations? No, okay, so.
Does anyone want to second the proposal that we accepted?
I will.
You will, good.
So all in favour of accepting the name and plan, this is so we can go forward effectively when we're ready for the Schedule fourteen. Yeah, good.
Okay, thank you, councillors. To agree the use of Survey Monkey for the survey. See, Philippa and the officers went through the different types of surveys out there, focusing fairly, fairly fundamentally on online surveys. You, you've probably all heard of Survey Monkeys, but there, there are some competitors out there. But the working group considered all, all of them and looked at them. The Survey Monkey by far is the easiest one for us to use and the clearest one for the population to read and use it. For example, it allows you to save your consultation halfway through and go. For example, it allows you to save your consultation halfway through and go off and weed up on a paragraph within the neighbourhood plan if you're not sure about it and then come back to it. So it doesn't sort of dump itself halfway through. The costs, and I've just looked at the draft agenda, which hasn't been circulated. But the costs of Survey Monkey aren't in there. But it's not onerous and I don't know whether Philippa can drag it out from the top of her head.
Off the top of my head, it's three hundred and eighty four pounds.
Yeah, it's not a huge.
It's a single news licence, but it allows us to do as many surveys as we want.
And that's another point.
Use it for other.
It allows you to do surveys, so any other councillor can use it for a survey if they want to find out what, to publicly think about things.
Having just gone on this group and been part of the discussions regarding Survey Monkey and the costings for the policy map, I'm quite happy to second those proposals.
Thank you, David. So do you want to take Survey Monkey first then, Chair?
Oh, I was saying, yeah.
Yeah, we'll take Survey Monkey.
So I proposed it, David seconded it.
All in favour?
Thank you. To agree the costing for the policy maps. Policy maps, so these are, the policy map is an online map and it's high definition, so you can drive into it and scroll into it, see what it is. And it's a map of all the policies which are included in the plan, which we've just agreed, in pictorial form. And it is only used for the planning department. So they get a planning application for a piece of land, a building or whatever. So they dive into the policy map to see what policies in that area are impacting. And then they can go and read the plan. So it's really a tool for the planning authority to use. However, you know, we refer to it, we paid for it, so the public will want to see it, we figure. But not everyone's got the ability to use IT. And therefore we want to print it and have one in the hub and one in the library. So we've gone through Aldi Designs to get some quotations. He's done some competitive quotations. And the working group are putting in before you one colour print for the library at eight hundred and forty one millimetre square, which is A nought size. I'm hoping, David, you're the printer, at sixty pounds, laminated at sixty pounds. And one colour print, two metres by two metres on ten mil foam or backing for the hub at two hundred and twenty two pounds. So two hundred and eighty two pounds spent for two big pictures of the policy map. That's proposed. David had already seconded it.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no.
I don't really owe you all, I don't really owe you all.
Just make sure they get seconded.
Thank you.
So we don't survey, we don't policies. Twenty three, twenty four, ninety six, planning committee.
Well, the minutes have been circulated. We have, as I said, there are three that we discussed last meeting and they've already been and they've approved, they've agreed what we've said. Out of the twelve that's outstanding, which includes those three, there are three of them which, in one case, we approved it, they refused it. In two cases, in one case, we refused it and they've granted it. So it's three out of twelve. I think Royal Mail are doing better than we were. But as we always say, we don't have a voice. All we do is pass our comments on. And the planning firm will do what they will do.
Yeah, well, they've got the legal backing in place.
And we are very fortunate, you know, we often, most of them actually, we ask, they could ask for extensions. Because the day of the planning, the occasion is often either before our meeting or the day of the meeting or, you know, so, but we usually, probably ninety nine out of hundred, we do get, you know, we get granted extra time.
Any questions for town pop? Twenty three, twenty four, ninety seven, Green and Clean, considering the updates from Green and Clean.
Drama time, eh?
Drama time, eh?
Yeah, well, so unfortunately we had to cancel the last. Fortunately, we cancelled it on the Friday, Eva and I. And as you know, I was, well, rushed to hospital and we're there for five days. And I'd like to thank anybody or everybody who sent the, no, I said condolences. Send their concerns and that's appreciated. I haven't arranged the next one yet. Neighbourhood, Green and Clean Forums, I just received a notification of a possible speaker, et cetera, but it proved far too expensive for the sort of amount of people we get, et cetera, et cetera. So we're looking into that. I'll have another word with Debbie and we'll see if we can get anyone on that. As I reported at the F and G P, we've got a problem because, as you all know, or probably councillor Shaw don't know, or Michael, we provide plants free of charge to about twelve or thirteen local groups. But unfortunately, the contract, and we get them through Bradford Council, which we pay cost price from Bradford Council. But unfortunately, their contractor has gone into liquidation. Now, I have spoken to Mel Smith today actually, and he has he's confirmed that he has plants ordered, but because this particular company probably supplies a lot of other councils, it was quite a task to fulfil the orders. So any bulbs is going to fulfil the contract for the bulbs. However, they will be mixed bulbs, there won't be any fixed colours. And similarly with the bedding plants, we offer some various fixed colours as well as mixed colours. So they're going to be all mixed. So I'd like to suggest, propose, probably me and the office staff, through probably Debbie, that we, as a council, write to the individual groups at this stage, tell them the situation and tell them. You'll get what you're given. But you're getting it for now and you'll have a load of colour. So that's my proposal. I think that's covers it for now. I'll see what I can do regarding the next letter pick, but we'll look into the future.
Okay, thank you, John. And then the next bit on the Green and Clean is to inform the council with responsibility for Green and Clean matters. We have looked at this in F and G P, we decided not to bring it here in case any of the councillors that were recently co-opted wanted to take this forward. As we all know, John does a sterling job, but I think a bit of cover for him, especially in recent events, would be good. So if there is anybody who would like to take a role assisting John, please step forward now.
Just come up with a suggestion for the next letter pick, that'll do me fine. No, it's success, it's because we're doing so well, that's the problem. Well, I think so anyway.
Well, I think we do, I think you do a grand job, John.
Keep going, keep going.
Support would help you.
Will get.
Anybody wants to become secondary responsibility for Green and Clean?
Keep it going for now and then.
Oh, okay. Looks like you'll have to jump. Okay, moving on then. Twenty three, twenty four, ninety eight, Five Rise Market. I still have no date for when the rare times are coming out of the reference shop. I am, I am going to get our own quote, start making inquiries with people about the plants in the road to see how much they might cost. Again, primarily, so if there's opportunities that come up for you, so you've captured to get something for it, so we're ready to go. I've adapted the design that Canal Rivers Trust originally got done. I can circulate, it looks something like this. So this is, I'm going to try and get quotes for people producing something like those that could go on the road. Just so we have a better idea of what our plan B might be if nothing else comes to fruition. That's it. Any questions on it?
Canal Rivers Trust seem to be, bits that I've read recently are struggling, aren't they?
They are.
And cutting and.
And in fact, I'll jump back to Green and Clean because I did say in the week that they'd said they could take, Bradford had said they could take on eight bins, that seems to stop down.
No, we're taking on eight bins along the tow path, but three of them are in Bingley.
But it's just the ones I think that are easiest to get to and not necessarily in the basic places. So three and five rides will be a problem continuing the fires, I think. So it's the two further up after five rides on Slender Road and Canal Road. And the one in the middle of Bingley, by the bridge, the other three that Bradford, they're going to take on. And as far as I'm aware, it's still Canal Rivers Trust intention to take the others out.
As far as Chair, we have to say, three bins being maintained is better than none.
Yes. I think it's a watch this space and watch the if it does cause issues or if it caused the fruition. Any questions on the other one? Twenty three, twenty four, ninety nine, the town council for four, you've all had town council for. Not any more questions? Twenty three, twenty four, one hundred, correspondence to the correspondents. Somebody had the email on my phone, almost never. About the weekend of traffic, parking over, rescaters, driveways, again. All directed to Bradford Council. There's not too much else I think we can do on that one, so.
I think the main problem with the Bingley weekend was Friday with the weather. But they did have a contingency plan body in situation for it. And they actually worked it out over the time of the evening that they put in a new road in. And I had my vehicle down there, we were towing vehicles in and out and we sorted it all out. And it ran really well after that. It was just on that Friday, or Thursday, that they had the problem with the bad weather. And they hadn't taken into account as much as it was going to be as bad as it was.
Yeah, I think the weather was all right, this was more just people.
It was parking because they couldn't get the car into the campsite on the Thursday. That was the main issue. Because that back entrance, it was just like a bog. Even the ambulance were pulling it out with the telehammer.
So again, I think we just note that.
That's obviously an annual event, isn't it?
Yes.
So there'll be some learning lessons learned and contingency.
Oh, yes.
Put in for next time, et cetera.
But it's an event that happens. It's run by private companies, it's not a private company, so it's, we don't have a lot to do with it.
We can ask them.
We can ask, we can ask for things, what they're going to do, yeah. Then, moving on, we've got an email from Highways, Bradford Council, that puts in bars and park breaks in Main Street. Effectively, I think it's a delivery drivers for Domino's, mounting the pavements. Yeah, yeah, to prevent that, so. Again, I think we note that.
Chair, I actually met Nicola on site through something there and there's a lady marking the road up and it is primarily the area by the traffic lights and the crossing that Domino's seem to like parking on. Hopefully, she was putting four ballards in, hopefully we've got to do an additional one. That will have to wait and see, but it is in the oceans. You're more than allowed to park in yellow box.
So again, I think we note that. Next one's phone calls, I was going to do. Same thing at this point? Hopefully discuss that and clarify that. Email from F and Chamber of Trade, reading their next meeting on the fourth of September. I think it's not really their next meeting, it is a formal relaunch of the Chamber of Trade. I think the meeting itself is by invitation. But if anybody wants to go, I'm sure Mr Illingworth will provide second invitation. And it would be, it would be nice to see it as a vibrant body, because I think it's, as people here have said, I think it's been struggling recently.
Struggling in the way you went on it, David.
So then we've got an email from the West Yorkshire Lieutenant's seeking an invitation to come to Maitland.
Which Chair, I think we should do.
So we'll invite them to come and tell us all about themselves.
Well, they just have to make sure he doesn't run along this guy and don't let him have a lot, just give him, say, right, you've got, because I've talked on my, I've known him for thirty years and he's, yeah.
It might depend who actually comes.
Well, it's him himself that said he's interested in doing it, so I think he will.
But there's a group of them, isn't there?
Yeah, there is a group, Eve, I think it's fair to say that.
There's about sixty, there's sixty?
Yeah. I think the best said that, David that's written this one.
Remember how it you are broadcast eventually will.
Yes, so we will invite them, but I think we've already got people lined up for September and October.
So in the new year.
So it will probably be in the new year. And then we had an email from the Western Lights, about Christmas lights in Bingley, I think that was them falling out of the trains, wasn't it? Which has been, is all.
Yeah, same way.
Okay, so that's that one. Twenty three.
Chair, there's been an email, there's been a correspondence today, hasn't there? About, no, about this newsletter, about this newsletter.
Oh, yeah.
And it needs sorting, don't it? Because we just, there's no place in town council for party politics. So I would like to say, suggest or propose that in the future, we make it clear that no, no political literature, literature's a good word, literature should be combined with ours, giving the impression, what would you do without you? Giving the impression that it's from us. I think, I really do believe it's important.
It wasn't so much, if I may, it wasn't so much that it was in the same letterbox.
No, it was in the, exactly, exactly.
As you can imagine, that's not acceptable to us who commission the delivery for the other leaflet.
And I noticed, thanks to Geoff, that you responded to that, I've read that. But I just, I do think in council it is important.
Yeah, I think we need to look at our contract with them, so it's it goes out without information associated with it.
It'll be the same company, won't it, after delivering one, I think.
Which obviously they could, but even if they're not supposed to have them stuck into each other.
It shouldn't be stuck together, no.
One of the parties will lose out of that.
But we don't know if this was just accidents or the way.
No, it's just, I have some, I have some experience in delivering leaflets. And it's a lot easier if you stick them all in one thing and you can put them together, try to do five or six at once.
It's probably not a lot of cutting because mine must have been on the ground today.
So we will need to turn up with whoever a company to ensure.
Yep, okay, thank you. Yep, okay, thank you.
We have appropriate distance, I suppose. So twenty three, twenty four, one oh one, promotional items, to consider any promotional items from town council, which is by the size of the meeting.
Promotional items.
We've just got the City Culture up there. Should we let people know about the mullards? Anything else, do we want to put something around our concept of working with the board councillors? I'm not sure I can read the board councillors.
Do we advertise what one of us, or gramps have posted to us? To say these are available for X, Ys, et cetera.
Yeah, we've put more on Facebook. Anything else promotional, if any, at the train meeting? Is that already on?
Gone, it's next chill, next one's in there.
Yeah, I'm a bit worried because it's by invitation. We've done put that it's happening.
Michelle's put it out there, hasn't she, and said you can join as a member of Young Business.
Question, can I, Chair, can I just go through, David?
Is it invitation? Because we were trying to get as many businesses.
Originally, it was an invitation, but we, Michelle and myself made an offer, if they gave us a list of the members, we'll knock on other business doors in Bingley and say it's happening. So I would say if it's advertised, you are a Bingley business.
That's what I mean, yeah, yeah, it'd be open to.
You could turn up.
Yeah, that's what, that's, that's what I'm asking.
So probably sign it, for business people, so it's like, yeah.
What can we say about progress on the neighbourhood plan?
We could say we've.
We can say we've agreed it.
We've agreed it.
And the consultation will be soon, wasn't it?
In the autumn, yeah, the autumn.
In the autumn soon, winter's coming.
It's been planned.
Yeah, it's, it's like tweaking.
Okay, anything else?
Your climate emergency.
Any residents will be wanting to know that we've stricken it from the agenda.
I think young residents would be interested.
I know several neighbours who would be interested.
David, David, is there anything about the emergencies talk you'd like to talk about?
I, I don't think so, no, we, you know, it's there as a group, should there be an emergency? We're doing some training, we did agree that we're not going to have a standing army of volunteers because it's beyond the wherewithal and how do you keep volunteers engaged for maybe another ten, twelve, fifteen years? So it will be a reactive emergency group. Well, I don't think we need to sell.
Okay, sorry, can I just jump back to correspondence? There was the email from the lady, wasn't there, wanting to join the neighbourhood plan working group?
Yes, there was, yes, you're quite right. Do you want to take that, Chair?
Yeah.
Do you want me to say, or do you want to say? Oh, there's, there's a neighbour of mine called Jan, Jan Smith, who wants to join the neighbourhood plan working group, as a lay member. We have my wife Lynne on there as a lay member, John Decker, Tony Irwin. Martin, Martin, yeah, Martin Weaver sometimes, yeah, Andrew Quay. So it, it's got space up to twenty, twenty lay members, so Jan put an in for. Twenty members.
In total.
In total, six of them, fourteen lay members, so we could do with some more. It's a bit late, late stage, but we are talking about regulation fourteen, we are talking about people standing up and talking about it, so I would propose we agree that Jan should join the neighbourhood plan working group. Thank you very much, John. Any comments?
Any objections?
Would you?
It's been seconded.
Thank you, Ayesha, that was good.
Twenty three, twenty four, one oh two, date of the next meeting, to agree the date of the council meeting. Tuesday, the twenty sixth of September, and it's going to be at the Little House in Market Street, Bingley. And just advance notice to you all, the first thing on that agenda will have to be the election of the Chair.
You do have to elect a Chair, you just have to nominate a Chair.
Well, nominate a Chair for the meeting.
Who turns up, they might all be on other.
And anyone that tonight.
That, that is just a advance notice, that will happen, so we need to step forward to chair that meeting. Then, one two, twenty three, twenty four, one oh three, exclusion for press and public.